Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 7, 2022 regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Present.
Vreeman.
Here.
Peters. Corbin.
Coronado.
Here.
Arnshorst.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening led by council member Tim Vreeman, followed immediately by the pledge of allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you are so inclined.
Please play with me. Lord, we come before you this afternoon at the end of a workday, a busy day, and we thank you for everything that's taken place in it. We would now ask that you would draw our attention to the agenda that's before us, and that we would be able to interpret and to make decisions that would reflect your will and the will for the city. And so we put it before you that you would use each one of us, our perspectives, our feelings, and our intelligence, that we could make wise decisions. We put our meeting before you, that you would have your way with it as well. It's by your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These items are considered to be fairly routine and have been previously reviewed by council members as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion unless stated otherwise that a member of the public asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda, or if a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. And before I ask that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
For A, absence excused; for B, approval of minutes, August 17, 2022 regular meeting; for C, Osev Office; for D, written petitions and communications, speculative IFT Electric Steel LLC, 72 West 64th Street; for E, Holland Board of Public Works, water treatment plant generators; for F, Holland Board of Public Works, East Point Substation Construction Agreement and Budget Amendment; for G, City Clerk, claim filed against the city; for H, City Clerk, acceptance of grant funds, Michigan Department of State, 2022 election security grant; for I, City Clerk, development liquor license request, Hope College Hayworth Hotel; for J, Community and Neighborhood Services, scheduled public hearing for September 21, 2022, CDBG program, 2021-22 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report; for K, Finance Department, purchasing, approved purchase of one pickup truck, Parks and Recreation Department; for L, Finance Department, purchasing, approved purchase of one pickup truck for Centralized Vehicle and Equipment Department; for M, Finance Department, tax abatement, scheduled public hearing for September 21, 2022, two PA 198 tax abatement requests for hyperon automatic automation, 72 West 64th Street, Suite 140; for N, Finance Department, purchasing, approved purchase of two detective vehicles; for O, Finance Department, purchasing, declare items as surplus; for P, Finance Department, speculative tax abatement, set public hearing for PA 198, speculative tax abatement for September 21, 2022, Electric Steel LLC, 72 West 64th Street; for Q, Management Administrative Services, downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment, scheduled public hearing of necessity for September 21, 2022; for R, Management Administrative Services, downtown principal shopping district assessment, set public hearing of necessity for September 21, 2022; for S, Management and Administrative Services, downtown snow melt operation and maintenance assessment, scheduled public hearing of necessity for September 21, 2022; for T, Internal Services, Technology Services, approval of purchase of three cameras for CATV budget amendment.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda? Seeing none, is there any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Mr. Corbin?
Your honor, yes, I'd like to remove item for I, probably in honor of one of our former council members present, Mike Trethuie, that would be the development of liquor license request, Hope College Hayworth Hotel.
All right, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and placed as item 12D3 on the regular agenda. Any other council members that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the amended consent agenda?
Supposed to approve the agenda as presented.
As presented or as amended?
Amended.
As amended, thank you, Mr. Vreeman. No, we don't infer anything here, especially when Mr. Trethuie's in the room. Is there support? Support by Byrd, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Coronado.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda this evening is public comment. As part of the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, in every one of our meetings, we allow for the opportunity for public comment. That gives the public the opportunity to speak directly to council. Please note that this is one-way communication, this is an opportunity for you to speak to us. We do not answer questions at this time, nor do we engage in conversation, but we do ask that you direct, you direct all of your comments to the city council. Each person is limited to five minutes, and we do have a light system here that will help you know how much time you have left. There are three lights in front of me, there's a green light that means you're doing well on time, there's a yellow light that means you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that. If you'd like to address council, please come forward to the podium and please state your name and the municipality that you live in. And now, having said that, is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henriksen-Zeland. It is my pleasure tonight to invite you to the annual mayor's prayer breakfast, which is a week from tomorrow. Tomorrow is the last day to sign up for the registration for it. We will be honoring our mayor and also the mayor of Zeland, so it's good to be there. It's 7:00 a.m., a little early, but it'll be at City View, and a wonderful program. Our keynote speaker is Bernadette Smith, and she's a woman of diversity, so it'll be a pleasure to have her speak, and then, of course, we'll be praying for the city as well. The prayer breakfast goes back five years ago, six years ago, actually, but because of COVID, we could not meet, and so we're continuing to meet and looking forward to the years ahead of doing the same, praying for our city, praying for you by name as well. So it's a good time for people to gather together and remember what God has done for our city through you and through the rest of the community. It started with Mayor Box, excuse me, Mayor DeBoer, actually, and it was through that that we began, and she came, and we're, as far as I know, the mayor and Elizabeth will be there also. So it'll be good to have you there if you can make it, I know you have work schedules, and if you could come for breakfast, that would be good, and if you needed to leave early, that would be fine as well. So I have the invitations here, I'll give them to Keith, and hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Sure. Jim Story, City of Holland, in the Alleghen County portion, and give a brief county report as the county commissioner for the city of Holland in the Alleghen County. For the past 14 months, we've been working to develop a system for the distribution of our American Rescue Plan dollars that bequeathed the county in 11 municipalities, or excuse me, 24 municipalities within the, within the county, and I'm pleased to report we're making some investments going forward. In the last two months, we have worked with two of our rural townships, Lee Township, Pullman area, and Cheshire, both on the southern border, to attract Bloomingdale Communications to help fund expansion to, of internet to both of those townships, access to it, using ARPA funds that they have, our ARPA funds, investment from the utility itself, and also some applications going into the state for matching funds. So that program seems to be moving along. In addition, we have issued a request for proposal for internet service providers to bid on sections of the county, and we're using the ARPA funds as a carrot for them to have an interest in it. Of course, y'all are familiar with broadband expansion, given the successful vote of the electorate here in the city for bestowing that privilege on the Holland Board of Public Works. We're also using some of the ARPA funds for water investment in municipalities. So we've told some of our smaller cities that if they are happy with their internet service, that if they want to instead apply to us to help them with some stalled water and sewer projects, that we will, you know, match their investment of ARPA funds, and so our most recent commission meeting, we approved just a little bit, $1.6 million for the cities of Alleghen, Sagatuck Township, and the city of Plainwell for various municipal improvements. Finally, in terms of legislative or county commission action, we are pursuing our Third Circuit Court judge appointment. Ottawa, our neighbor to the north, of course, was given one, a Fifth Circuit Court judge earlier this year. We have a bill that's pending in the legislature to give us a third one, thus reducing the backlog up to seven to eight months before a resident can, or anyone else can go before one of our two existing circuit court judges. The bill is now pending in the House and had a meeting last week with the Attorney General to encourage her support for speeding up that service. And finally, an advertisement on Friday, the Alleghen County Fair kicks off for another season. The fair dates to 1852, continuous at all those years since then, and is one of the largest fairs in the country for a county fair, so come on down. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for your attention.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Oh, we do have one more, we do have one more. And would you, sir, please state your name and municipality for the record?
Citizen Myron Trethuie, currently of the city of Holland, will be a citizen of Temple, Texas here in the next couple of weeks, and just like when I was sitting up here, the mayor missed me all the time, so. Nathan and I were talking on Monday, and he reminded me that this was the last business meeting before I leave, so I wanted to come and thank you again and say goodbye. We'll still have some communications back and forth, I'm sure, but just to say thank you again to everybody that I've worked with, some of the new people that I didn't get to work with as much. Tim's been doing a great job, I've hear, I'm hearing very good things up in the First Ward, and I'm hearing good things about the progress that the city of Holland is making with this group here. You all should be proud. I was proud to serve with you, and I will be proud yet to call Holland home, even though I won't be here. So thank you again for everything. Staff has been absolutely wonderful, all of you. I'm going to miss this place, but grandkids are calling, so, and they've already, they've already got us booked in Grandparents' Day and what have you in school, so I've got no choice anymore. So again, thank you very much, it's been an extreme pleasure, and we'll keep in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Citizen Trethuie. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, and I will ask Mr. Trethuie if he would please come back up to the podium for a moment. Mr. Trethuie was the esteemed council member from the First Ward for 25 years, and also the mayor pro tem and our chief governance officer, which is why I did not make any comments to Mr. Trethuie during the public comment period, because I wanted to make sure that I stayed within our governance structure, that this was one-way communication during public comment, and I know that Mr. Corbin would have held me to that as well. But lucky for me, the next item on the agenda is special presentations and recognitions from mayor or council or city manager. So this gives me an opportunity to thank you, Mike. Thank you for your incredible service to the city of Holland. Thank you for being a great mentor to me for my first term, as you sat at my right hand and whispered instructions to me and corrected me often. Thank you for being an incredible role model to every member of council and every citizen in the city of Holland, and thank you also for being a really good friend. It was, it's always fun to stand next to you and chat. I learned so much from you, not from what you say, but how you act and how you care yourself, and how you care so deeply about the people of the city of Holland, the city itself. It shows, it shines right through, so thank you very much. And since this is an opportunity for not only the mayor, but members of council and perhaps the city manager, I will open up the floor to anyone else who may have something that they might want to say to Mr. Trethuie before he leaves us one last time.
I will turn on my microphone and say, one thing that you always mention during our advanced retreat is civility. We should, and I thought, why? Why, I mean, we're all civil. Well, how prescient was it? And so here we are in a state where maybe we're not all civil to one another, so you saw that, and I hope we all continue to think that civility and civil discourse is a way to run our lives, so thanks for that.
Thank you, Maggie.
Mr. Vreeman?
Mr. Neighbor, it has been an honor and a privilege to be sitting here after you have worn out the seat so well. Thank you for inviting me in to this process, for mentoring me into it, and being council as I have engaged into it. I give you blessing as you travel and change, and change your resident and your return address, knowing full well that you have a place to be back here in Holland, and the welcome wagon will be ready to receive you. With that, may the Lord bless you, may he keep you, may he guide you and protect you in all that you do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Hookstra?
Well, I wouldn't be here had it not been for your suggestion many, many, many years ago that I considered doing this, which I thought was a crazy suggestion at the time, but as it turned out, for me, it's been a great, great experience, and people can either love you or curse you for making that suggestion, you know, depending on their, their point of view, but it's great to having, having the opportunity to serve with you all these, all these years now. One downside is that now that you're gone, it's Jay and I being, carrying the moniker of old dudes, some say sages, and use other acronyms, which just means they're old and they, they forget things, right? But anyway, I wish you the best, you and Lori the best, and it's been a great privilege to serve with you, so thank you.
Thank you, David, as, as well. It was a great decision. Okay.
Mr. Corbin?
Yeah, Mike, you left me holding the bag. No, you don't realize how much you did for the city of Holland as mayor pro tem and chief governance officer. There's a lot of work to it, behind the scenes, people don't realize, so I have a high deal of respect for you, not only while you were a council member, but even more so now as being the pro tem and the chief governance officer. I realize how much you were doing for all of us at the time, so thank you for that. Thank you for being a model citizen, a model council member, and I hope I can, I hope I can aspire to be just like you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Van Beek?
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Keith.
First of all, and I'll build to something, you know, I have to give you a hard time on the way out, but first of all, with great respect and thankfulness from me, but really from all staff, past and present, and I'm even, I'm even going to say future, because there was always an expectation and a realization that you expected us to do our work. If, if maybe we didn't have something done well, or, or an answer prepared for, we'd hear about it, and you know what? That, that's great, and I think hopefully we, we lived into that. But what we also know, and you reflected it when you did it tonight, is you turned, maybe that was outside of the governance rules, I need to point out, but you recognized and thanked staff, and I know that staff always knew that about you, and that you had ways big and small that you reflected that, so from all employees, thank you very much. You know, the thing that has continued even as you've left us on Wednesday nights and otherwise, is every time I go on WHDC, this guy, he doesn't just text or call me during or after, usually it's the text at 7:30 in the morning where he's like, "You better be ready, man." And he's always talked about, I, I don't think he's pulled it off yet, where he's kind of changed that low voice that he has into something different and called in with some crazy question, but I think the reality is WHDC, they do like broadcast everywhere, and you can call in from anywhere. So I'm, I'm ready for you, Mike.
Fully aware, fully aware of that, and I'm getting my Texas accent ready.
Okay. Well, I, I'll know if someone calls in with a Texas accent, I'm not buying it for a second, and I will know it, know it is you, but thank you very much for your service and your support of staff always.
Thank you, Scott.
Lynn?
Yeah, actually, that reminds me that one of the, I mean, you were always, you are always a person I could go to when I first started to ask a question, you were always willing to answer my questions, but that really meant a lot to me when I was going on the radio and nervous about being on the radio, and you were always there to respond with a text afterwards, and that really meant a lot. It feels like a really, a really important role as we, you know, engage with the community, and that, and that just was always really encouraging. I would wait for that text, and then I would, and I would feel like I did my job, so thank you for always being there to answer my questions.
My pleasure.
Mr. Trethuie? Oh, Mr. Byrd. Quincy?
Scott said he wanted to grow up to be just like you, so that's a, that's a lofty goal, because we know Scott. And, and we know you. Professional, courteous, a listener, engaging, smart, a mentor, those are a few of the words that describe you, just a few. We often talk about our founding fathers of the city of Holland, and you gave 25 years of your life to this community. There are things that people have a passion for, there are people who go around life and never find a passion, never find something to live for and to give and sacrifice for. You did that for 25 years. That's a long time. Thank you for that. As we think about how the city has grown, what the city has come, or has moved from before to now, all the way back, again, from our founding fathers, there's a legacy that you have left that is undeniable. You're a person who a lot of people may not know, but you've impacted their life tremendously. Before I ever came on council, I've been here for seven years, and like I said, 25 years, you were impacting my life, and I had no idea until I came to know you as a mentor and now a friend, and I wish there was a way that we could broadcast the name Mike Trethuie and the actions that you've taken in this community that people would know, just like they know about the founding fathers. So thank you is just a small, I guess, way that I can show my appreciation to you, but it goes so much further than that. You're a great man, Mike, and Temple, Texas is getting a great one. Thanks.
Any closing words, Mr. Trethuie? I'll let, I will let you, even though it's against the governance rules this one time, let you say anything that you would like to say at the mic.
No, you've all been very, very gracious, and you're humbling me. Just good luck. You've got a wonderful city in front of you, you've got wonderful citizens, you've got a lot of big projects, and I know this group can handle it without any hesitation at all. Best of luck to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next item on our agenda this evening, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the opportunity for in-person public comment, we do also have an email address where members of the public can send their communications directly to city council members, that is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. I'll repeat that, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We collect those in the interim between our regular meetings and then accept them into the record at those regular meetings. We do not read them out loud, but council does read them as part of our packet, and it's my understanding that we do not have any written petitions or communications this week, so we will move on to the item that was taken off of our consent agenda, and that is item 12D3, a development liquor license request from Hope College, the Hayworth Hotel. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I am going to, in a moment here, ask Jim Story maybe to come up, just so he can talk about this application on behalf of the applicant, and I believe that's Derek Emerson with him from Hope College. Just to be fair, so you all know, and the members of the audience and the listening public knows, the reason that we recommended, and the mayor pro tem pulled this off the agenda, I believe, is just a procedural issue. We missed, our fault, that actually this does require approval of the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority, before you would take final action on it, so our recommendation still stands with one slight alteration, and checking with the city attorney, we got the go-ahead that this would be okay, that you actually, if you wanted to, you could that you actually, if you wanted to, you could approve this as recommended contingent upon DDA approval. And it is slated to go before the DDA at their next meeting. And then what would happen is we would just make sure to close the loop with all of you, in particular, if, if you would pass it and if the DDA would, would concur. So that's the reason that we took it off the consent agenda, and maybe sometimes it's just nice to know that before we ask our friend Jim Story to come up and, or Derek to come up and just describe what this request is. Thanks, gentlemen.
Manager, Manager Van Beek, thank you for that. With me is Derek Emerson. The hotel is his baby for Hope College, and as many of you may know that, and I think I would defer to knowledge here, it being an educational institution, as to why, you know, Hope is seeking this license. But I would just say, in terms of timing, it is important to move it along, because the Liquor Control Commission, who ultimately has the final say about all licenses in the state, you know, is pretty slow to take up these development district licenses. And so they are, you know, local municipal approval is required for development district licenses. So if we can speed it through the locals, it gives us some more time to kind of push the wagon through in Lansing. But with that, I defer to Derek on explaining what's going on here.
Well, it seems unusual for Hope College to come forward for a liquor license. I've been at Hope College for over 30 years, never thought we'd be doing that. But we're doing it within the context of the Hayworth Hotel. So as most of you know, the Hayworth Hotel underwent a pretty major renovation a couple of years ago. We've reopened, it's been very successful. It's not surprising that wedding receptions and many of our clients would like to have alcohol at their events. So we were still cautious about it, and we've been working with third-party vendors for a year, licensed third-party vendors, just to see if this fit the, the way Hope College still wants to run, and it did, it's worked really well for us. There, the license from the third-party groups have some limitations, which make it a little harder, harder for us to sell some items. So if we take on a liquor license ourself, we have a little more freedom as to what we can offer our clients. It makes us more competitive with other similar entities in, in Holland. So it's just part of competition in that part.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council for the applicant? I, I just have, I just have one or two, and Derek knows this, the rest of council probably doesn't know this. Derek was my head resident my freshman year at Hope College in 1986. Hope has been, was a dry campus at that point, is still a dry campus, except for a couple of small exceptions. This isn't gonna be extending it beyond just the Hayworth Hotel. I, I think I understand that, but I want to make sure that the public understands exactly, kind of, the geography that we're talking about for the liquor license.
Right, right, we're just applying for the Hayworth Hotel right now.
Okay.
Now, I won't tell you 10 or 20 years, because I wouldn't have guessed this 10 years ago, even that we'd be here. But in full honesty, we're just going for the Hayworth Hotel right now.
But, but this ask is not gonna extend to, say, Collin Hall?
No.
No?
No, sorry.
Well, I don't live there anymore, so.
Yeah, but you might visit again, so we're a little worried.
All right. Any other questions from council members? Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the development liquor license for Hope College Hayworth Hotel?
We approve the recommendation contingent on approval by the DDA.
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin? Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 12E4.1, Resilient Lakeshore Heritage Grant Application. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to hand it off here to two very key members of our team. Matt Van Dyken has been working on this as our Municipal Capital Improvement Fund project guy, has been working on evaluating this building and taking a look at work that needs to be done. And then Connie Locker is here, and we're really excited about the work that she has been doing, and it gives you an opportunity to hear what she's been up to also as our grants manager, and this specifically, a grant application. So I'm going to start with Matt, and then I think she's, he's gonna hand it off to Connie here at some point.
Yeah, great, thanks, Keith, and good evening, everyone. This is a project you've heard about a couple of times for the exterior of City Hall. So this is our kind of march through the renovations of, of City Hall. This is a big step, this is the outside of it. There are some issues, you can see this is the, the south elevation of City Hall, and it identifies some of the areas that need to be addressed from a exterior brick, mortar, block perspective. If you remember, you may not, but we actually did an exploratory piece, oh, a few months ago, on the north side of City Hall. We removed about a, a 900-pound stone, and looked to see what was behind the wall, so to speak, to make sure that we wouldn't be beginning a project that we'd have to come back to you and say, hey, we thought it was gonna be $400,000, and it's now $900,000, right? So we did some exploratory work. We hired Quinn Evans to come out. You can see this slide right here, they identify some of the different issues that are, that City Hall is having. There's open cracks that are probably allowing water to get into the building. There are some exterior renovations that weren't done quite right in the past. So all those pieces, the metal pieces that kind of extrude from City Hall for whatever reason, for the last hundred and some years, those will all need to be addressed, and the exterior will be cleaned, some other things will be taken into consideration. This was broken up into high priority, a medium priority, and a lower priority. We're recommending that we move forward with all of those priorities and just get it taken care of once and for all. We're gonna be in here with, you know, high-low scaffolding cranes, and it just makes more sense from a, a perspective of the shakeout and getting folks here to, from, from my perspective, it's obviously your, your final decision, but to be able to do that. So we're at a point now where, where we've got quite a bit of information put together to go out to bid. We had actually considered that we might be doing this work already this year. However, the way things have shaken out, and the way this ship-o, and Connie will explain it much better than I ever could, so I'm gonna let her do that. But this grant became available to us, and it seemed to be directly, I mean, it couldn't be more directed to, to what we're doing. So I guess with that, that's kind of the scope of the work that we're looking at, at completing. Just so you know, we've renovated the city manager's office, we've renovated the third floor. You know, we'll be doing interior renovation of the finance department here in the not-too-distant future. We'll do the exterior renovation, and then we're getting pretty close. We've got two more office suites and some carpeting in here in the training room, and the entire building will have been fully and completely renovated. So exciting times, we've tried to do that in the past, they actually moved everybody out of here, all the way out to Brooks Avenue. That was just before my time with the city. Took the building completely apart, the building was a shell, there weren't any floors in it, and they rebuilt it with a shell around it. So I think it's worked out pretty well for us to do the renovation, the way that we've been doing it, with step-by-step and keeping people in City Hall and keeping City Hall open. That still seems to be very important. So we're reaching the end of, of that process, but this is gonna be a big one. I think people will really notice, you've probably noticed a couple of the buildings downtown. Recently, I've had some repairs and done some tuck pointing, actually, the building on the corner of Ninth and River is going through some of it on the backside of it right now. But this is important work, that we make sure that we get it taken care of, so that this building 50 years from now is gonna look just like it, it does, or actually really not like it does, it looks today, probably like it looked 75 years ago. So with that, Connie, if you would please come up and kind of explain the grant process and all that stuff, the magic that you do.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, everyone. So Matt did a great lead-in to the work that I've been doing on this grant opportunity. So in grant writing, sometimes it's a little hard to find a project that fits a grant opportunity. This was not the case for this one. This is a one-time grant opportunity through the State Historic Preservation Office. They received funding through the National Park Service, a special fund there, to offer this opportunity to just 24 qualifying communities in the state of Michigan. So some of their qualifications through the State Historic Preservation Office are size of the community. They're looking specifically at smaller communities, location, right along the lakeshore, either on the lakeshore or within a certain mileage. And then there's a requirement that the community either should be a Michigan Main Street community, a certified local government, or a certified redevelopment-ready community, which Holland checks quite a few of those boxes. So right off the bat, it's one that we're definitely qualified to apply for. And the grant itself is focused on rehabilitation of a historic structure that is either listed in the National Register of Historic Places or part of a historic district that is listed in the National Register of Historic Places, which City Hall is. So knowing that we had this project already scheduled for this fiscal year and in the budget for this fiscal year, there was money that was set aside for it. This grant is really an excellent opportunity for some pretty significant cost savings if we're awarded it. So the total quote from the Crispin Company came out to $376,000, and we're gonna be putting in the maximum request of $100,000. So the hope is that, you know, if we're awarded it, we'll be able to, to incur some significant savings, so.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions from council for staff? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the Resilient Lakeshore Heritage Grant Application?
We approve.
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by, was that Arnshorst? Thank you. Thank you, any discussion? I, I just want to thank staff for this, it's, I noted, we already had money budgeted for this, so assuming that this grant gets approved, it looks like we may be then that much farther away as a school year, which is always a wonderful, which is always a wonderful thing, it's always a wonderful thing to be able to say to the taxpayers that we're doing even better than we thought we were gonna be doing in the first place. Any other comments from council members? Yes, Mr. Corbin.
One other comment, this, this is the exact example hiring, having you for this position. It's $100,000 you just brought in this community that we weren't aware of, so thank you for that. And that just proves that the investment is well worth what we've done so far.
Great. Any other comments from council members?
I was glad we had a chance to go through and see some of this stuff, too, the tuck pointing needs. This last year, we had a tour of the ceilings down and everything upstairs, so that made this, from our point of view, very understandable and certainly easy to approve. So thank you.
Anyone else? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Item 12E4.2, Fire Station Bonds Authorizing Resolution. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So this one, I was joking with Matt earlier today, I said, don't worry, I'll introduce and do the boring stuff, and then like normal, you can be the star of the show and show pretty pictures and everything of what we're looking to do. So to not disappoint him, if not you, technically, what's in front of you today is an important additional step in approving or an authorizing resolution that would authorize the final self, self, to proceed with and then ultimately sell bonds to support this project. And this project, again, is not only a new fire station at Waverly, but also a storage facility at that site, but then also, following those two things, renovating the fire station at Collin Park. You had a notice of intent to bond, which by law was required, and that triggers a referendum period where people can come forward and say, hey, we don't want you to do this, and go through, you know, that, that triggers a potential voter referendum. We did not receive any notice of that, so we've extended beyond that 45-day period. So this is the technical step that, and, and actually the final step for you as council that would then authorize Lynn and I to continue with the team, bond counsel, financial manager, to proceed with the selling of these bonds. The schedule would be that we're looking that we probably issue these bonds then late in September. About the price, talk about the pricing here in a little bit also, but it does authorize us then still to bond the full up to $18 million amount, if for some reason, which I don't foresee us doing, if there's some reason where we think we should actually and need to, only need to sell less than the 18 million. This also creates the opportunity for Lynn and I, in interest, and it's authorized in here, that we could actually only do a sale for an amount up to or less than 18 million. But the 18 million is the maximum amount. So I certainly can handle, answer any questions on that technical step that you're approving, but as I suspect, I think what people are really interested in is Matt's presentation of the pictures and the, and the progress that's been made toward, towards this exciting set of projects for the city. Take it away, Matt.
Thanks, Keith. Yes, there's been probably not visible work to city council been, being done, but there's been a lot going on behind the scenes. This has been a pretty interesting process with the team from Integrated Architecture and BRW. There's a slide here that you can't read, and that's okay, but it just shows kind of how they work through the process of what needs to go in the fire stations. And really, the first step of that was identifying what rooms there are. Okay, you have to have a quartermaster room. Well, how big does that quartermaster room have to be? Does that have to be four by eight, or well, 10 by 12? The Public Safety Chief's office has to be in this building. How big does that have to be? How big does SCBA room have to be? How big do the, how many bays do we want? So there's a whole process that they go through, that they actually just design a block, right? So each room in each station is a block, and we go through that, and we're absolutely integrated with that, the chief, our whole team helps determine what those blocks look like, and from those blocks, then we start to build what does the fire station itself look like. It's very important, GDK has been along with us, and we've begun to build the project estimates into that. Those project estimates obviously get refined the further we go through the process. We had a pretty grueling two-and-a-half-plus-hour meeting last week. You can see the questionnaire in that. What kind of exhaust covers need to go on the truck? Do they need to be magnetic? Do they need to be, all that kind of stuff? Do we need a data port in each of the bedrooms? Do we need, where do the airhouses have to be? How many water bibs, and what size do they need to be? So you can see, we've kind of gone from this block that this need, this room needs to be this big, to kind of drawing into the station, to now we're really starting to get into the detailed design. And when I say grueling, we had some discussions about the placement of air hoses that went on for a fairly long period of time. But that's important. Each of those steps is extremely important to get us kind of to, to where we're, we're going. And Keith, could you hit to the next slide real quick? So you've seen these before, Collin Park, the renovation, that's a little further down the road, but it does have some additions. We maintain all four of the bays, and then has some additional sleeping quarters. Go to the next one, Keith. The Waverly Station, obviously, that's the station that goes from two bays to five bays to accommodate not only the growth that we're currently seeing in that area of the city, but the growth that we know is going to happen. There are 18 dorm rooms in this facility as proposed, and then a large training facility. We moved the training officer out to the Waverly Road piece. Again, you've seen these, Keith, if you could just advance that one more. And then a revised site plan. So we're at the point where we're taking the survey, and we're integrating kind of the proposed site plans for the Waverly Road Fire Station, and we're saying, you know what? Well, that's kind of proposed, conceptual, we're looking at the topography, we're looking at what has to be done here in order to meet the stormwater requirements that we put forth as a city on the site, and we're saying, this is how this site is, is going to lay out now. So this is what we're planning on moving forward with. It's a little unclear, you can see there's a dedicated location for an addition in the future, if we would ever want it, to the very north of the building. We're not proposing that we do that at this point, but it does give us that option moving into the, the future. And then we also have, if you look, that north-south oriented building, that's the storage facility. There is the potential for an additional addition onto that. So right now, we are working on, working through the budget estimates, and let's go one more, Keith. Warm and cold, warm and cold, warm and cold zone, warm and cold zone, warm and cold zones, warm and cold zones, warm and cold zones, for cold zones, for cold zones, for cold zones, for contaminated zones, for contaminated zones, for contamination. for cold zones, for cold zones, for contaminated zones, for contaminated zones, for contamination. We have private toilet and shower rooms, so that, you know, it's a, a gender-neutral toilet and shower room in each of the, the facilities. And it, also, there's some security upgrades. You know, right now, those fire stations are pretty wide open. Our fire, our firefighter, our firefighters out, our firefighters out there, firefighters out there, fighters out there, in the, out there, in the community and interacting with the folks. We don't want that happening at three o'clock in the morning unexpectedly when somebody just walks into that station, so, um, that's kinda the highlights of where we're going. One more, Keith?
Is this gonna be the one that they really wanna see?
I think so.
Okay.
We'll see. Ooh, yeah, that's good. That's good, so this is what we're proposing the building will ultimately look like. It's five bays, if you see the little bricked, uh, piece to the north end of the left side of the screen, that's some storage material on the other side of the bay. And then, the kinda tower of glass in the middle is the area that overlooks the dayroom, basically where they mainly live, and then the dormans would be on the back. The low glass right out under where it says Highland, Holland Fire Department would be the training facility, and then offices there to the, to the right. So, a building that, when we look at some of our other fire stations, maybe looks a little bit more modern, industrial, but when we think about that, uh, corner of Thirty-second and Waverly, you know, look around, it's in the area of, you know, S-two Yachts Building, which doesn't look dissimilar from this, and some of the old Davenport Building actually looks quite a bit like this. So, we think it stands out enough to be a, obviously, a municipal building, but it, uh, does also kinda blend in with that unique area of the city, and then is of a size and scale that, right now, will serve this community for the next fifty years, uh, just like our existing stations have. The integrated team, BRW, GDK, the city, uh, has been working really, really well together. Uh, that doesn't always happen, uh, on some of these larger construction projects, sometimes there are egos that come along with folks, and I would just say that, that hasn't been the case in this at all. It's been a really positive project, uh, moving forward, and we're really excited next, uh, spring to be breaking ground. Keith had alluded to the project costs. Right now, we're looking at, you know, a budget that includes the cost of construction, the architecture and engineering, construction management fees, furniture, technologies, a ten percent contingency, um, includes all three of the buildings, and that is tracking right or, at, right about eighteen million dollars. So, those cost estimates will continue to be refined, uh, as we continue down this construction road and we get better information, but I'm, as designed, uh, and again, this is going through that process of, of block to location of air hoses and water bibs and things like that, um, this, these, this building and then the Collin Park renovation will meet the needs of the fire department. That was, I think, a, a really important piece, I wanted to make sure that you guys understood that this isn't just, "Let's build this pretty building," right? I mean, that's the end of kinda the journey, of what, what does the building look like that we're gonna build? I think it looks nice, and there's another couple slides if you wanna just transfer, um, just a couple different perspectives. One more, and the, kinda the, the, the main public entrance to the building, and there's a firefighter entrance, um, towards the back, but really, that's what we're looking at. Your original resolution of intent was for eighteen million dollars, we think we should go through and continue along with that eighteen million dollars. There'll be pieces and parts, I've been through enough of these projects where, you know, this costs a little more, and maybe that comes out of contingency, or maybe this costs a little less, or, so there's gonna be a little bit of a dance we're gonna have to do as we go along, making sure that we're not, you know, robbing the Collin Park Station to pay for something in the Waverly Station and, and vice versa, and I think we've got the team that can, um, that can do that moving forward. What we have now are cost estimates. Those cost estimates are based on very good information, including very recent construction of fire stations, but they are cost estimates. Those of you that were on council when the Civic Center bids came in, those were based on cost estimates, and they didn't come in very close to what those cost estimates are. I'm confident within this team that we're gonna, we're not gonna have that situation again, but I just wanna make sure that council understands that until you have a bid from a steel supplier, or a roofing contractor, or a CMU block person, or a painter, or an HVAC guy, we don't have guaranteed pricing. So, I say that caveat, you've heard me say it before, I'm not trying to make excuses, I'm just trying to set the correct expectation as we move forward with a lot of these projects. Should you choose to continue with this intent of eighteen million dollars, uh, we will likely begin to bring in front of you things like the purchase of a generator for the Waverly Road Station, perhaps for the, the Collin Park Station, because those are up to eighteen months out. So, there's a very good chance that we will create a bid spec, bid it out as a city, buy it, and get it coming before we actually bid the construction of the building out as well. So, really, I think you're giving us, in this meeting, you gave already some pretty clear resolution that you wanted to proceed with this. Um, this is a, another step that says, "Yep, we're going," and then, very soon, uh, probably mid to late fall, we actually go out and we bid the Waverly Road Station out, um, get those concrete numbers, and then make adjustments if we need to. Hopefully, we don't, um, but move this project forward.
Thank you, Matt. Questions for staff?
Yeah, I, I do have one question, um, starting with, uh, at, when Lynn Raymond and I joined council, we were fortunate enough to have been invited to tour the Collin Park Station, and it was clear then, and I know this is all kinda, you know, they were interested, the firefighters were interested in having us tour, because it was clear that it was outdated and squishy, and the places to sleep and the bathrooms were just not adequate. Now, you have, you don't just have male firefighters anymore. So, this is good, I'm glad this is happening, and I think this is a handsome building. With this building, number two, is, is it coming down totally, or is this, part of this being renovated? I, I can't remember.
So, that, that's a great question, and this, uh, there's a minor mistake in that that is actually station number one.
Oh.
And station number two is the Collin Park Station, which has never made any sense to me, because...
Okay, but this had a two on it.
Yep, and, so, if you look at this, if you look at this site plan, it would probably make more sense that that is now station one, because it's gonna be the larger station, so that will have a one on it, not a station two. One thing I should've mentioned that I don't think I did is that, that kind of building look, elements of that will be carried to the Collin Park Station as well when we reconstruct that. What you see here on this, uh, site plan is, do you, if you see that far southern parking lot, the northern edge of that is about where the northern edge of the existing Waverly Road Station is, pretty close. So, obviously, we'll actually be building these buildings within about seventeen feet of each other. Uh, once that new building is up, we get occupancy and it can move firefighters into that facility, then the old one will come down.
Thank you.
Any other questions, just Mr. Corbin?
Yeah, just with the smaller items that you mentioned that you might start purchasing in advance, I, I just, I know we have a, a grants person now, so take advantage of looking at grant opportunities that might help us either, um, pay fully for that equipment and/or portions of that equipment would be very important at this time, so, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Hookstra, and then Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Uh, I have a question and then a comment first, uh, the questions for, um, our city manager, and I apologize for not bringing this up before, but it's just now occurring to me. Uh, we're looking at a maximum of eighteen million dollars bonding here. Can you remind us of how that situates us in relation to our overall capital project debt? I know some things are soon coming off, I think, but can you give us an oversight on that?
Yes, thank you very much. So, remember that our new finance director, who wasn't able to be here with us tonight, unveiled for all of you our long-term financial plan, and we really wanted to get that fully in place and understood before we moved forward with a variety of projects, including probably about at the top of the list, this one. As part of that analysis, we took a look at not only our fiscal situation moving forward, but in particular, we took a look at, um, our debt and certain debt that's coming off the books, so, shall you say? So, um, when we did that analysis, um, we had plugged in, um, basically, this, um, debt that would come onto the books for a period of time at this amount, and are comfortable with the recommendation, um, that we're making, um, that we're not jeopardizing our financial future moving forward, and in fact, we're staying right in line with the taxation levels that we've had and the growth. And you know very well, past and current finance directors, and my guess is future finance directors, they always do a great job of being conservative on revenue coming in and being conservative, or being aggressive in expenditures coming in, so we make sure that we appropriately, we don't build, build excess into that, but we're making sure that, uh, we're providing for, um, some assurance levels for management and elected and citizens.
Thank you for that, it's good to be reminded, especially the citizens, to be reminded that, um, you know, that sort of due diligence has been done, and we're entering into this, you know, in a prudent manner. My comment is, uh, listening to this litany of things that, you know, you're looking at with these new buildings and, you know, what kinda hoses you need, or pencils or whatever, uh, I can't, and I'm glad that you mentioned the Civic Center, 'cause my mind goes back to that experience, uh, where, um, I think in that process, there were some financial constraints initiated or interjected into that, and, um, we had to navigate through that and did that very well, due in large part to Matt's, um, influence on that, and his work on looking at different alternatives, and I keep thinking about polished concrete instead of, you know, Israeli tile or something like that. So, I just wanted to mention that. As a comment of confidence in, uh, our staff's ability to look at this and give us the best bang for the buck possible, so, thanks for everybody's work on that.
And I'm gonna deflect a lot of that thanks, and that goes right to that guy sitting in the back of the room, and his...
Well, I didn't wanna look at him.
His, his staff within the fire services, right? There's been a lot of time spent, again, I mentioned, that was a, that was a grueling meeting, um, the other day, uh, but they're looking at this long-term, right? And they're looking at it, to, to their credit, long past when their careers here will be over, and they won't know the people that are sleeping in that station. And I think that's a lot of credit that should be given to them and, and their staff, and I know I will pass that along to, to Dan and David and Chris, and just say, "Hey, you guys, your council appreciates that," so...
I was just kidding about that remark, so. Congratulate and thank you, your staff for that.
Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, actually, Dave addressed and asked the question that I had, which was essentially, "What gives you the confidence in the eighteen million?" And, uh, you've, Dave has, I think, expressed it really well, that in your experience, this is, um, you, you've done your due diligence on this. I don't know if you have anything else you wanted to add to that? You and your, and the rest of you?
No, I just, I, I think the Civic Center was, that, was a process that I don't wanna go through again, right? So, I think the team that's been assembled here, are their cost estimates gonna be perfect on every little line item? No. Where, we can't ask them, I, I can't ask them or say that GDK and Dustin can give me the price of what it is to bid out CMU block walls on the Collin Park Station a year from now, right? There's been enough volatility in the world that things change, but I think we've built those budgets in such a way that we can adapt, and we can make changes within the building envelope to handle all those different pieces and parts that'll come up, because in my experience, something's gonna come up, a hundred somethings are gonna come up, and we'll deal with that as a team, and we'll, we'll get through that. We hope that, we hope that that doesn't happen, and we hope that there are a hundred thousand-dollar things that come up, and they're not a couple a hundred thousand dollar things, but I'm confident in this team that we will get these buildings built.
Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Freeman?
Matt, just, I'm wondering if you can just publicly, just, uh, I know there's all kinds of process and all kinds of wild cards of this getting backwarded and that, but what would be the anticipated completion?
So, the...
Of Waverly Station?
So, the Waverly Station, the ant, what we're anticipating and shooting for is that that will be breaking ground next spring. So, there's pretty significant site work that's gotta be done, so there'll be a bunch of bulldozers out there moving dirt around for a while, but we would anticipate then that would then be giving us occupancy about the next spring, so about a one-year build cycle, give or take, you know, six or eight weeks on e- either side of it, depending on what happens. It's gonna be important that we get a, a structural steel package out, we get a generator out, you know, we get things like, we had a question come up, "Hey, can you guys get, you know, um, why am I missing the big electrical pieces? Transformers. Can you get transformers? 'Cause we can't get transformers for eighteen months." And I made a call to our lovely friends at the BPW, and like, "Oh, yeah, we pre-ordered all that stuff, we think we're good for four or five years' worth of construction." So, just, it's pretty amazing, but we're gonna be taking steps as we go along to get through that. While that's going on, we'll be doing the detailed design, the, the grueling meeting on where the air hoses go for the Collin Park Station, and then get that package out the door so that that starts right when the other station is completed, and then that's, again, about a year, give or take. So, from next spring, we'd anticipate in two years, the fire stations would be completed.
That's great, thank you, because it, as we, you know, we drove around the other day and saw all the construction happening through Ward One, Ward Five, just everything that's taking place in the area, um, it's all gonna culminate kinda all at the same time in our history. Way to go, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Byrd?
Got a question, um, so, during this renovation, where, where are they gonna be housed at?
So, we're still working through that, there's a couple of different options. We could move staff to the Virginia Park Station, uh, in Park Township that we share with jointly with Park Township, that had, building has not seen a lot of use historically, uh, but we are part owners of it, so we could move folks out there. Some of the fire staff could be moving into this building during the renovation. We could have temporary housing for them someplace, or there are enough bunks within the new Waverly Station that when that station is complete, you could move the staff into there. That's really, um, I always say, "I build 'em, I don't drive 'em." That's more of an administrative decision for Matt and, and his captains to choose, but we have some options on moving, on moving people around, oh, yeah.
Great. Any other questions for staff? Great, thank you, Matt, appreciate it. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the Fire Station Bonds Authorizing Resolution?
Motion to approve twelve D point four two.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado? Uh, any discussion? I just have one comment, thank you, Matt, appreciate it, thank you, Matt, appreciate it, and the team that's put this together, uh, it's a lot of money, uh, but this is one of the most important things that we do, health, safety, and welfare of the people of the City of Holland, is one of our prime directives, as, uh, Mr. Tethruwe reminded us time and time again, and it's really important that our first responders have the tools they need and the environment to work and live in that they need to be able to do their jobs effectively and well. Um, and this is one of the best things that we can do, is to make sure that they are as equipped as possible to be able to keep the people of the City of Holland safe. So, thank you. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Ernst Horst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mirbachs?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, next item, twelve E six point one, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Public Safety Services K-nine program, donations collected from the twenty-twenty-two K-nine golf outing fundraiser event was held, held on June twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and one cents. Donations, fifty-four thousand one hundred ninety-one. Expenses, twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-eight ninety-nine. End kind donation, West Michigan Yacht Sales, one paddle valued at six ninety-nine. Crown Motors Yeti Coolers valued at five hundred and fifty. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Wonderful, thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of council in regard to gifts?
Move to accept said gifts with the token of our appreciation.
Moved by Coronado, is there support? Support by Byrd? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, item number thirteen, communications from the city... Item number thirteen, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I hope you missed us at least a little bit the last two weeks. Don't answer that, but we are happy to be past Labor Day, I suppose. It was noted often by staff and in City Hall, even over the last two days, that it seems like you come back from Labor Day and things just kind of get a little bit faster, one or two notches. So that's good. As you've heard me say often, it's better than the alternative when things are not happening. Just to give a little taste, I know I put this out in my Friday Communications study sessions for the remainder of September, we're taking a look at walking you through what we think is really a final recommendation and alignment from a lot of different sources and recommending committees on a process for our historic greenhouse, for a permanent home and a clearing of the site of where that's been. We also want to go through a really neat process that planning staff has worked on consultants for, for a vision for South Shore Village. And then later in the month, we're doing some work, because we keep working on large projects, of some next steps also with broadband, and in particular, one of the things that we're going to want to really finalize, maybe some recommendations for you on, and that we'd ask you to take action on, is that you've indicated use of our SLIF-RIF, remember those, the state and local fiscal recovery funds? But really, taking a firm and kind of an affirmative step of setting those funds aside and how we think that kind of sets us up for moving forward. So that'll be a discussion probably at the last study session in September. And then finally, I've been putting this out for a couple of weeks also, but for you and also for citizens to know, we are at that time already. It seems like it was just yesterday where we instituted, I think at that point it was the second version of kind of our reformulated citizen survey process that we do every other year. We really lean into a process there where we use the same questions, the same methodology to make sure that we're getting statistically significant information from a appropriate sampling of our community. It is fantastic to have Hope College, and in particular, the Frost Center, that has that expertise and does that in partnership with us, for us. And those calls are going, are programmed to start here very soon. So for any of you that know, or for anyone listening, if you get a call from Hope College Frost Center and starting asking questions about the City of Holland and services, it is legit. It doesn't go out to everyone. Again, it's a random sampling of our community, that they work very hard to make sure that's representative of our population, but that is legitimate, and that will be starting here shortly. And then what we always try to do is, we think that that's a very good input that we try to bring back, kind of kicking off, and then an input for all of you at your, do I call it the advance or the retreat at this point? I don't know. I think I'm still calling it the advance. So, in January. So just to know that that's, that's starting. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Appointments and communications from the mayor. First, an appointment for someone who's had a very active role in this evening's meeting and a very active role in the community at large. I would ask that the city council approve the reappointment of Jim Story to the Civic Center Place Board for his third full term, said full term expiring June thirty, 2025. I'd ask for a motion in that regard. Moved by Byrd, is there support?
Absolutely.
Support by Vreman, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Jim, and thank you for your service. It's possibly been six years already that you've been on that? That seems like a long time.
I have lost you.
Well, wonderful. Well, thank you for that. We appreciate that. And then just, just one note of, of thanks and pointing out, on Monday, absolutely fantastic Labor Day Truck Parade. Seventy-nine trucks from all over the community shined up and beautiful as they went by. Some of, I looked at some of them, I thought, I don't think that truck has ever been used for anything but to be in this parade. And thousands and thousands of residents there, folks not only from the City of Holland, but from the City of Zealand, and all areas in between. It was an absolutely perfect day. Gallons and gallons and gallons of free ice cream, great event. Wonderful to have the opportunity to, to participate and watch that event. Great, great opportunity for the community. And that is all I have this evening. Appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Anything from council members this evening? Mr. Byrd, or Ms. Coronado first, and then Mr. Byrd?
Thank you, Mayor. I had an invite from Holland Corales. They wanted me to extend an invite, a grand night for singing Thursday, September twenty-second, at Windmill Island. I think they're focusing, their theme this year is bringing the community together, and they're going to be focusing on Matthew Shepard's story. So that should be a great time. And then also, Escape Ministries, that is an alternative education that supports some of our youth, our Leaders of Tomorrow fundraising banquet. Also, cordial invite to support their efforts. I volunteer there, I volunteer there, volunteer there, and cheer there, and try to get back, because I was one of those knuckleheads, you know, that found an alternative way, you know, a couple times, and grateful for those programs, for the kids of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Byrd?
I was going to comment on the truck parade as well, but you did a great job in that. The only thing that we did as a council is, we did not follow in footsteps of Mike and broadcasting that out throughout our meetings. So, I know we missed a couple of meetings, but we'll, we'll do better as a council. Then, currently, school has started. I have three kids in school, and all three of them are in sports. The majority of their games are on Wednesdays. So I'm just letting you guys know, I will be missing some Wednesdays to cheer like a rabid fan for my kids. So, if I'm not here, that's where I'll be.
Great, thank you, Quincy.
Yep.
Any other communications from council members? Seeing none, there is just one more motion that I would entertain at this point.
I move to adjourn.
Moved by Coronado?
Support.
Support by Byrd? All those in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.